Board of Adjustment Meeting, will please come to order. Item can notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways, notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building, notice made available to the Township Clerk, notice sent to the Courier-News and Star Ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hillary?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Kalphish and muted.
Kalphish unmute. We know.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Regio? Roy, you're muted.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Blount?
Here.
Mr. Hadaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
Chairman Weissman?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Salutes of Flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Is a liberty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Caneely, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, there are. There are two changes. The Arroyo matter is adjourned until June twenty second. They did not notice. They must notice for June twenty second. One Hundred Lakeview Rear is adjourned until June twenty second. They had noticed, so no further notice is necessary. Those are all the changes that I have.
The second one was the Lakeview Rear, that one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's start.
What's the second one?
Second one is one hundred Lakeview Rear.
It's number thirteen on the agenda. Okay.
We're still waiting for revised plans from them, so they're gonna go the end of June.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, Chairman.
Yep, okay. Starting with number five, that's twenty-three dash ZB dash two-five-Z. Gil and Centeno Almonte and Bautizar Almonte.
Are the applicants present?
Present.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I swear.
We can't hear you, Jim.
Okay, we have your name and address, please?
My name is Guia Centeno Almonte. Address is, the resident address that we're working on is nine Ry Street, Piscataway, New Jersey, zero eight eight five four.
Thank you. Can you explain to the board why you're here?
Um, we're here to discuss the alliance for the addition that I would like to add on to my home.
Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein?
Yes. Henry, would you like to comment on this, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's just a couple of items here. The addition, there's some separation or some separability between the addition and the existing hall. So it could easily be converted to a two-family home. So the recommendation is that there should be a deed restriction added to the home that is to be used for a single-family use only. And then other than that, I don't know if the SOAT had a chance to review the staff report. Uh, there's a couple of really just minor things with the plans that need to be revised. As far as some schematic plans, things that have like kitchen, second kitchen on there. A lot of it's just labeling and just showing where the grill is gonna be located on the site plan. Let's see, the rear setback is de minimis at best. Um, and then you just need to show the the pool equipment's gotta go in a conforming location, okay? So that would be a condition. It's not shown on the plan. Really should show that on the site plan. And it should be in a conforming location, which is at least ten feet from each property line. Let me just see here. Yeah, I don't see really any issue. Is there any reason why your fence was not all the way up to the property line on the, on the one side of the property? Like you showed it four feet off of the property line. I was wondering if there was a reason for that.
No, I actually, um, I wish that my architect was on here with us. No, there isn't a reason. I've been, actually, I'm a first-time homeowner, so I really don't know the rules. So I've been traveling around, you know, the neighborhood, and I've noticed that most people would have it to where their home is, like right where their home begins, and the front is all clear. And if they have it a little bit further up, then what they have is they have the ones that show like, like, you know, four feet, and then it shows gaps in between.
Yeah, that's not the, yeah, that wasn't the issue or the question, though. It's on the one side of the property, the fence is shown four feet off your property line, and I don't know what the reasoning was behind that. Um, because then what you're doing is you're leaving four feet of property for either your neighbor to use or four feet of property in between two fences. So either way, it's probably not a great idea.
I agree with you.
Just could, just check with the architect and.
Okay. Henry, his architect's here. He's raising his hand.
Okay.
Hi, Gidget, I'm here and Henry.
Oh, hey, Joe.
We originally laid out, laid that out in modules of the fence, but I understand your recommendation that we can break the module, you know, five-foot lengths, and we can push it a little bit closer to the side over there, just to, just to make, just to clean it up really with the neighbor.
Yeah, I'm. I have no other questions. I mean, I think really that should, it should just be like closer to the property line just to not leave any areas of maintenance concern, as long as we're up to the neighbor's fence, if the neighbor has a fence on that property line. Again, I don't see any other issues. The only, I think there's an, there is an easement that, that crosses the property, and you just have to be aware that if for some reason fence, we need access to that easement, you're responsible for any costs associated with the removal and replacement of that fence.
Got it. I read that.
Well, if you understand that, then like you said, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't see any other issues with this application.
Thank you. Mr. Mathis, you're okay with the suggestions by Mr. Hinterstein?
Absolutely. I'm gonna, um, it is a one-family home, so it's just for my daughter, my husband and I. So I don't have a problem with doing the deed, um, his recommendation, and as far as the fence, you know, my, um, Joe was gonna fix all that and then we, you know, present it again. Absolutely. I'm okay with everything.
Thank you. Uh, anyone on the board have any questions concerning? Hearing none, I'd like to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public part of this request. Again, one more time, anyone on the board have any issues at this point? Hearing none, I would like to make a proposal that we accept this request, that this suggestion is going to understand to steam. Can I get a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura, will you take a roll call?
Mr. Hillary?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Jim got cut off. We've been approved. At the next meeting, we will adopt your resolution, and I will email to you, and then we would just need revised plans for the file as per Henry's comments, and then you start your permits.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate your time.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I can log off now, right?
Yes, ma'am. Go do your thing.
Are we waiting for Mr. Caneely to come back on?
I'm back on.
Oh, thank you. Uh, item number seven, that's twenty-three ZB thirty-four V. Uh, Savit Kumar, Matthew Sodana.
I'm present.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Uh, eleven, eleven Brookside Road, Piscataway, and New Jersey, zero eight eight five four.
Can you explain to the board why you're here?
Yeah, so I, in my house, I am adding two car garages and converting my existing garage. And there is some variance approval there. My architecture has, architect has submitted the plan, and we are requesting the board to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein on this one?
Yep. Uh, Henry, would you like to go through your report, please?
Yeah, uh, my recommendation here is I don't see really anything glaring with the application. My only issue is I really feel that the garage addition should be moved back two-point-three feet, and that would make the addition comply with the front yard setback requirement. Um, and what that would do is it would, and I believe even pushing it back two-point-three feet would not create a rear yard setback variance, if I'm mistaken. Let's see here. I, I'm almost positive that, because I believe the back was about twenty-three. Uh, I'm sorry, twenty-eight feet. That was the size of the addition. Oh, thirty. I think I scaled it, and I'm pretty sure it could be, it could be moved back to two-point-three feet. Uh, so it's a little bit articulated along the front facade. I think aesthetically it would look, have a better appearance. And then I think the existing front yard setback doesn't get exacerbated by now making that front wall even, even greater. So, um, I, I feel like if the applicant's willing to do that, uh, there is a moratorium on the road. They're not proposing to open up the driveway any, anymore. Uh, they wouldn't be able to because of that moratorium. Um, so I think the existing curb cut is what they propose. And that, again, any fence, um, should match, if we move the front, the garage back two-point-three feet, that's where the proposed fence should also be moved back to, uh, to the front of that garage.
Is that acceptable? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that. Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you. Uh, anyone, anyone on the board have any other questions at this point? Hearing none, I'd like to close the wood section and open it up to the public comments. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments like to make at this time?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public portion. I would like to make a motion that we accept this request with the change of two-point-three feet pushback.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Hadaka. Uh, please call the roll.
Mr. Hillary?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Your application has been approved with a minor change as you agreed to based upon Mr. Hinterstein's recommendation. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy of that document to you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Moving on to item number eight, that's twenty-three dash ZB dash three-seven V, Joel Correa.
Joel Correa or an applicant from the fence company?
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Joel Correa, nine sixty-one East Lincoln Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey, zero eight eight five four.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm actually the contractor, uh, the customers on here as well. Uh, we're basically gonna be redoing their existing wood fence that is already on, in the easement. Uh, they also have a shed that's in the easement, and they're looking to move part of their fence up uh, towards the front of their house, which would, part of it requires the variance.
And you, and the owner understand that if the, if there's access to the easement that's necessary in the future, it would be the owner's responsibility to remove and replace the fence?
Yes, uh, well, from our understanding, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Hinterstein? Do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I mean, it really wasn't clear on the, the plan that was submitted. Uh, so what you're saying is you're proposing to move that fence up sixteen feet? Is that what that sixteen feet is?
Yes.
On the site plan? Okay.
So that, they, sorry, they have existing fence that's sixteen feet back. It's towards the back corner of their house. And they just want, they want to add new fence sixteen feet forward.
Okay, and that's gonna go all the way to the house, I would imagine?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it really doesn't, I don't think it changes. It stays in line on that. If, as long as it stays on that same angle, so that it keeps going further away from the property line as it comes forward, I think it's fine. So, again, my only condition was, again, that you understand that they need access to the easements, you're responsible for the the removal and replacement of the fence or any costs associated with that. Other than that, I don't think there's any issues with this application.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments?
No, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Like to close the public section of this, on this variance. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that this variance, um, the clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, when you second on that?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Kalphish.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hillary?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
The application has been approved. We will memorialize it, the written document, at our next meeting and mail that document to you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Have a good week.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, that's twenty-three dash ZB dash three-eight V, Nick Musumichi.
Is the applicant present? Mr. Musumichi?
Ah. Present.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Nick Musumichi, three zero two Plainfield Ave, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
Yes, uh, we put in a variance to put a pool, uh, in our backyard above ground.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Hinterstein?
Okay, sure. Mr. Hinterstein, will you please, uh, elaborate?
Yeah, I was just, I, I didn't hear a reasoning yet as to, um, why the pool has to go in that location. Uh, the ordinance requires it to be eight and eight. Uh, even with the gazebo that you have in the yard, it appears that you could, you have enough space to put both the pool and the gazebo in the yard between the house and the property line.
A, and we have no issue, uh, I didn't, I wasn't aware that the pool equipment needed to be offset and off the side property, and given that, we, we have no issue given the, the ten feet there. The other, we, so I have just enough space to slip it right between a concrete patio and with six feet of clearance to the rear property. And with that, our neighbor has a shed back here, so that would obstruct her view, so there's less visual impact by about sixty-five percent, about fifteen feet would be behind there for her. And also, we do not have a flat yard, so I'd be looking at a massive, I mean, not massive, but eighteen inches, give or take, of import, which would open up a whole other can of worms with, um, getting the soil tested, obviously, and, and, and meeting residential criteria. It, it would just set us back too far.
So what you're saying is you're willing to move the pool ten feet off the side property line?
Correct.
Uh, and you'd like to keep it at six feet at the rear line?
Correct, uh, correct.
But do you have a solid fence, or is that, what, what do you have in the back?
No, the back is, uh, the fifty percent slats.
Fifty percent. Would you be opposed to putting in some landscaping? Um, just that, like, some kilometer evergreens or something like that, maybe some, uh, emerald greens? Something that just help buffer the pool, uh, from the property line. I know they have the shed. I'm not so concerned about where the shed is. It would be just any area that extends beyond the shed.
Sure, I'm sorry, uh, what were those?
Oh, they're called Emerald Green Arbivites or Green Giant Arbivites. But the ones that stay a little smaller would be either the Emerald Green, or you could get some upright hetsey junipers. Um, they stay pretty tight as well. I, I think with, with that being said, I, I think that, and again, the pool equipment would have to comply with the ten and ten. Uh, because the one thing we don't want to do is nuisance the neighbors with, uh, you know, running pool equipment. So that pool equipment couldn't be closer than ten feet from any property line. So you can put it to the right of the pool, at least ten feet.
I don't know if you can see, yeah, it would be well off.
That's fine. That's fine. Um, so again, you'll need that when you go for your permit. Um, and then, uh, and then, and then the same thing, the shed is in a front yard. Um, you're not supposed to have sheds in a front yard. I mean, you have a corner property, and that's a hardship. But you do have a lot of area in the yard where the shed probably could have been located.
We did not put that, I'm sorry, sir.
No, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, we bought that house, and, and I, we looked back, it was like, oh, wait. It looked like the owner put it in, um, and.
I understand.
Yeah, we did some nice landscaping, so it cuts it off and.
Yeah, again, it, it's really just the shed from the, you know, the, the, the corner. It's, it's in a front yard, so you could put, maybe you could put some, uh, some shrubbery or some, some tall ornamental grasses around the sides of it, just to buffer it a little bit from the road, and I think, you know, we'll be fine. Uh, it doesn't have to be moved.
So, a, and that is from, uh, the side street?
Uh, yeah, the side street was the bigger impact, because it's behind your front yard setback on, on, uh, Plainfield. The problem is it's much closer on the, is it Cooper? I forget.
Cooper.
Yeah, on the Cooper side.
And, and what do you recommend?
Just that side to soften it up.
And, and what do you recommend to put there?
You can put the same type of plants, or you could put something, uh, you know, I'll leave that up to you. You might want to just double-check with me, uh, before you plant it. But, you know, something that would grow maybe even half the height of, of the shed, you know, just to soften it up.
Understood.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't see any issues. I think we're in agreement.
Terrific. Very good. Thank you. Are there, anyone on the board have any questions or concerns at this point? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments?
There is no public on, Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to close the public portion of this, um, request, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept the changes, the, uh, request with the cha, suggested changes. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Uh, Laura, we, please take a roll.
Mr. Hillary?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Your application has been approved. We will memorialize it, the written document, at our next meeting and send that document to you. You'll need that to get your permits.
Appreciate everyone's time. Thank you so much, and thank you, Laura.
You're welcome. Have a good night, guys.
Bye.
Bye. Moving on, item number ten, twenty-three ZB four-one V, Raul Alarcon.
Is the applicant present? Raul Alarcon?
I see his name. Here he comes.
Roll, Alarcon, are you present yet?
Oh, all right. Let's go to the, he was here. I think he got kicked off.
Okay, he might have gotten kicked off with me, so perhaps we can go to the next, uh, application, go back to this.
I heard he was here.
He was here, and we lost him. So, yeah, we'll go to the next one, and hopefully he'll sign back on.
Okay, no problem. Item number eleven, that's twenty-three ZB thirty-nine V, Neville Indar?
Is Neville Indar present?
Yeah, present here.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony?
Uh, Jim froze.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, could you, I have your name and address, please?
Neville Indar, sixteen Primrose Lane, Piscataway.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
I do have an existing patio that I get sun from the morning, like from eight o'clock until five, six o'clock. I have one big tree that is providing shade, but the tree has leaned. Uh, it's about to fall, so I have to remove that tree, and once that tree is removed, the whole area will be sunshine. You can't enjoy the patio. So I propose to put a pavilion just with a roof. Um, so when the family come over, grandkids are around, we can, you know, spend time there. There is no shade in that area.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may you want to talk to Mr. Hinterstein?
Hello. Mr. Hinterstein?
Yeah, really, the only issue with this is, number one, I imagine you, Mr. Indar, you're gonna keep the pavilion open, right? Doesn't have.
Correct.
Okay, so it will remain open, and the, the other issue is, is that the, the surveys that you, the survey you provided, number one, you call for, it calls for that you have a four-by-eight shed, but it appears that the shed's bigger than that. It appears that it's.
Yeah, I think that might be, that might have been a typo or a.
Okay, and also, um, the addition that you put up in two thousand and six, or was approved in two thousand and six, uh, is also not shown on the survey. So the problem is that.
I, I will have to update that survey.
So I need an updated survey, and the reason for that is that, for some reason, if you got, you got variances for a lot of these items, for the shed, for, not for the shed, but I believe, uh, you got the survey for a deck, you got this, uh, I mean, a variance for the deck, and you also got the variance for the, um, addition. And so if these weren't built exactly the way they were, you know, supposed to be built, even if they're off a foot, now your variance has changed, and you would need to get that variance confirmed by the board again. So that's why we really need an updated survey to confirm that the addition, the deck, everything that you're showing on this property is accurately depicted with the accurate setbacks. I think we could do is we could, you know, look upon this application favorably, you know, based on you're submitting a revised survey that shows everything and then setbacks. And as long as the setbacks are what they're supposed to be and what you say they were, there's not gonna be any issue, then you got your approval. The problem's gonna be is, let's say if, you know, your addition was built a foot closer to the road than it was supposed to be, or your deck was built, you know, closer to the rear property line than it was supposed to be, then you might have to come back for another meeting and get it, um, get it confirmed again, okay?
I will sure, I will surely comply.
Yeah, so really, that's about it, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think that's the issue, is we just really need an updated survey to show is all of the, uh, these items that have been approved and built over time with variances to confirm that they were built as per the approvals.
Uh, can you just make, can you make an exception? When, when I finish this, uh, pavilion, I'll send one survey with everything on the property.
No, yeah, I, I can't do that, um, because, again, I can't give you, if, if the other stuff doesn't comply, then technically you need to get variances, all these variances that we're giving you right now, that are incorrect. So that's why I really, you really need the survey first, and if we get the survey, soon as we get the survey, if everything matches up, you already have your approval, you have the resolution, the only thing that you'll need is that us to say, yeah, that survey's good, and you'll be able to go ahead and install the building. So hopefully that's something you can get done. I mean, it's gonna take two weeks just to get the resolution, so, um, so that gives you two weeks to get a head start with a survey or, you know, your survey or to get the survey updated.
I just wanted to say the deck, I, um, a, a variance was not necessary.
I don't know. Again, um, I, I don't know if that was considered like a side yard or a front yard. It's, you have a unique property here. So that's fine, but again, it's not even shown on the. So that's fine. But again, it's not even shown on the, on the plot plan very accurately. So that's why we need this updated survey to just see where it is. This way I know what the setbacks for everything that was constructed is. And if there's no issues, there's no issues. If there's issues, we'll discuss it at that point.
Yeah, I'll comply. It's not a problem.
So we can pass this contingent on receiving an updated survey?
Yeah, that would be a condition of approval.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments they'd like to make on this?
No one, Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this, approve this request with the condition previously stated. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Laura, would you please do a roll call?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Eli?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Indar, your application has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and mail that document to you.
Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weissman, number ten is back.
Yes, I saw. Raul, Raul Alacan, you here?
I'm here. Thank you so much. I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Alacan, could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please?
Raul Alacan, ninety-seven Eleventh Street, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here? Can you put your hand down?
Sure. Uh, sure. I, I applied for a variance to erect a, a six-foot fence, a privacy fence within the setback of, of the property.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hinterstein has a couple of comments.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Hinterstein?
Henry, there? Yeah, let me just take a quick peek at this one. We're talking about Eleventh Street here?
Yes, nine eleven.
It's appropriate. Yeah, I just had a couple of things here. I think you showed that the shed's being removed. Is that correct? Or is it being relocated?
No, it was removed completely.
Okay, that's good. And will the existing chain link fence be removed or is that going to remain in front of the other fence? Because there is a space between them.
No, that was removed as well. That was moved prior to the, to the purchase of the home.
Okay. And then the only last item would be is that we're going to be doing some road improvements, I believe, on Eleventh Street at some point. And we were hoping to get a five-foot temporary construction easement. So that when they do, you work on the street, that if they, you know, if a machine or something tramples the lawn on your, on the property adjacent to the sidewalk, when you repair the sidewalk, that we have the ability to repair it. So it's not to put anything in that easement. It's just more if we cross over onto that five-foot area between the property line and your lawn, we have the ability to repair it and without any issues. That's really what it's there. It's just the temporary construction easement, during that road construction.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't see any other issues with the application.
Terrific. Anyone on the board have any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments?
No one, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this request. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Please do a roll call.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Eli?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Your application has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you. You'll need that for your permits.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Moving on to item number twelve, that's twenty-three dash ZB dash forty-E, Yale Street Wrestling Club LLC.
Is the representative of Yale Street Wrestling Club present?
Yes, Michael Haves, attorney Michael Haves.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're on.
Very good.
Would you like to explain what?
Yep. Yeah, we're, the Yale Street Wrestling Club operates out of the the address of seventeen ninety West Seventh Street and is seeking to put a sign up on the building to announce its presence essentially.
And do you propose to illuminate that sign?
Illumination would be preferred if we could.
And is that interior or exterior?
Exterior, downlit. And then I, I know there might be concerns regarding timing and we would, you know, I guess ask the board if there's a time that you'd like to turn it off, we can certainly comply with any of that as well.
What time does the operation cease in the evening?
The, I believe the last class ends at eight o'clock, eight to nine, so nine o'clock.
Does ten o'clock seem reasonable?
Definitely. Yeah, ten o'clock's definitely reasonable.
Okay.
Illumination will end by ten, correct?
Say it again?
Correct. Illumination will end by ten.
Yes.
Henry, you have any other questions on this?
Not really. I mean, the site's appropriate for the size of the building. My only other my only other comment would be that, you know, they've had some recent approvals and that, you know, all conditions from the previous approval would remain conditioned upon this application as well. It's really the same application anyway, so that's really it.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I would like to open up to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments they'd like to make on this request?
No one, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. I'd like to close the public portion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this request with the noted comments. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Laura, please do a roll call.
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Eli?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Your application has been approved. We'll memorialize it at our next meeting and send you a copy of the resolution to you.
Thank you very much. Is there, can I put the sign up now then, or do I?
You have to wait for the resolution to get your permits.
Very good. Thank you.
In two weeks, I'll email it to you.
Oh, thanks, Laura.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Item number fourteen, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of April twenty-seventh.
First resolution is the Panada Resolution, which you voted to approve. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next application is, which you voted to approve. Weissman?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Next is the application of Patel for a fence and an easement, which you voted to approve. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Last application or last resolution is five hundred New Market Road. This was an application for a non-conforming use. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Reggio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have received.
Thank you. Moving on to item number fifteen, adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of April twenty-seventh. All those in favor, I'd say aye.
Aye.
The casters. Can I get a motion for a German?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
I got you back.
Yep, thank you.
Good night, everyone.